Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our candidate's forum this evening. Our candidate's forum tonight is sponsored by the Front Royal Warren County Chamber of Commerce. Before we start, we ask that you please mute or turn off your cell phone when we get underway this evening, if you would. Our guidelines are pretty simple, pretty basic, but the order of opening was determined by random selection. So each candidate will give a one-minute opening statement. We'll also be giving two minutes at the end for closing remarks. The questions asked of the candidates have been submitted to the Chamber of Commerce by the public or developed by representatives of the Chamber's elected committee in the weeks leading up to the forum. It's very important to know that all questions will be issue-based. And I regret that the candidates, by me, the moderator, no question will be allowed directly from the audience member to the candidates. So if you happen to come across a question during the course of the evening and you want to ask a question, please raise your hand. You've been given paper and pen to present those questions and give them to our screeners here to my side. Candidates will have one minute to answer our questions this evening unless otherwise indicated. The green light indicates, Mr. Kamel Raff says that you've got time to speak. The yellow light means you have 20 seconds left. The red light means your time is up. I want to be nice, I'm going to play nice, so let's see if we can try to keep it as close to that as we possibly can. If we have to interrupt you, then we may have to do that, but I hope we won't have to do that. And no rebuttals will be allowed this evening. This forum tonight is being recorded by Dwayne Coats, where we plan its entirety on the Government Access Channel number 16. Our forum tonight is in for the Front Royal Town Council. There are six candidates for three seats. Those candidates are Alfred DeCarter III, Gary Gillespie, Chris Holloway, Christopher Morrison, Robert Tennen Jr., and Latasha Thompson. We welcome you all this evening and look forward to hearing what you have to say for us tonight. We'll begin with our opening statements, and Mr. Holloway, you'll start us off.
Thank you. Well, I am Chris Holloway. I'd like to thank the Chamber tonight for hosting this forum. I'm married, two children, have four grandchildren. I was born and raised here in Front Royal, a small business owner. I'm the best president of the Department of Parks and Recreation Association, former member of the Warren County Parks and Recreation Committee, and I also coached at Scotland High School. And I was on Town Council from 2008 to 2012, the latter two years as Vice Mayor. I've seen many changes taking place here in our community, and some good, some not so good. And I feel we have great opportunities here, and I just want to be part of those changes. Thank you.
All right, next question, Ron, Mr. Gillespie.
My name is Gary Gillespie, and I currently serve on council. With your help and November, I can continue working for our community. I was appointed to council in August 2017, and it has been my honor to serve the town of Front Royal. I will keep working with council to bring businesses to our town, make improvements to the infrastructure, and bring workforce housing to our community. Bringing in businesses will help keep our taxes low and bring tax dollars to our town to help to repair sidewalks and paved roads. I believe Town Council should always work to find ways to cut people's taxes instead of looking for ways to increase taxes. I think tax increases should always be a last resort, and I share my parents' financial philosophy: If you don't have it, don't spend it. It's that plain and simple. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. President Tedditt, just a second.
Hello, my name is Robert Tennen Jr. I'm a lifelong resident of Front Royal. I've been a private contractor most of my life, and I like to come to council and bring my experiences and do the best for everybody in the community.
All right, sir, thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Hi, I'm Latasha Thompson, Lakeview resident here in Front Royal. I have a mother also, and a wife. We have a blended family of four kids, wrestling their life. If you don't twist it, Thompson, Logan, that's mine. And I'm just very passionate about our town. I want to stay here to see the changes that need to happen, be a friend of business, of course, keep our taxes as low as possible, and all of those good things. I also volunteer with the United Way, the Society of Emerging Leaders, PTO mom, and I serve as a sales administrator at the truck company where I can fund multi-million dollar budget for our model homes, building rates, cooperative marketing. That's just a little bit about me.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you. Should I go off the mic? Well, I want to say good evening. Thank you, everybody, for showing up. I would suspect that you're here because you care about the town as much as I do. I am a, what they call, I guess, a come-along or whatnot, but I chose Front Royal. And beyond that, a little introduction before my time runs out. I proudly served in the military for many years, and I am currently a federal employee. I served on this council with Gary Gillespie, and I want to continue these multiple questions that we're going to address to find out more about myself and my leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And finally, Mr. Carter?
Thank you. Thank everyone for coming. I know this is important to you, and this is truly important to me. Number one, let me tell you what you're going to vote for. You're going to vote for a man who's a Vietnam veteran, a self-employed business owner. I'm also the president of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, but I'm conservative, Christian-based. And the other thing that I like about that most of all is I'm pro-life. Now, I don't like to say a lot about what I do, but one thing I have learned, I'm in Front Royal, and as for me and mine, we choose to serve the law. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our closing statements will go in the exact opposite words we did in the opening statements this evening, so just give you guys a heads-up. All right, we've got questions for the candidates. You'll have one minute to answer each question, and we will start with Mr. Gillespie. You've been elected. What is your number-one priority while serving on council?
Thank you. My number-one priority on council is to continue to keep working with council on bringing businesses to our community. A little story about myself, I've been here ever since the Aptex mill had closed, and there's really been nothing else coming back to our community. And there's a lot of us who drive to the city every day to go to work because there are some businesses around here, but we need to bring in some manufacturing jobs that will help us to be able to continue our growth, and thank you so much.
Mr. Tedditt, same question to you. You've been elected. What's your number-one priority while serving on council?
To, excuse me, to not buy the tourism, try to get more business here in Front Royal. And to get more business here in Front Royal. And also, I'd like to see how we can improve parking for Main Street. It's always been a thing here in Front Royal. Also, I'd like to see changes out to the 524. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Thompson, how about you?
The number-one thing I agree with Gary Gillespie is getting the jobs in here. A majority of our households currently here are part of the Atlas population. They're working hard, they're still struggling to make ends meet because of the lack of employment opportunities. And if we want to improve our town, we start, of course, with our people and get them employed in jobs that pay livable wages, and they can dig them out of that hole. They're already working towards that, let's help do that. And of course, if you would improve those things, you would improve everything else. The shopping, tourism, all of those things improve with that. So definitely a top priority for me, and of course, being a friend to the small businesses who want to start here and to the businesses that are already here, not making it hard for them. Breaking down some of the barriers because self-employment is another perfect way to dig yourself out.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, you've been elected. What is your number-one priority while serving on council?
Quite simply, it's going to be infrastructure and economic development, but that is multiple phases to accomplish such a task. The thing is, everyone talks about jobs, but we're not going to have jobs unless we have adequate housing. And we have to have adequate housing and affordable housing. And economic development, well, you need major corporations to come to this area. They're not going to come to this area unless they feel like the community is ready for that and they have leadership behind it, or such. So that's what I have.
All right, sir, thank you. Mr. Carter, you've been elected. What's your number-one priority while serving on council?
My number-one priority for Front Royal would be, number one, to dispel the notion that we are on the heroin highway. There's something wrong with that. I think we've got the minds, the intelligence, the law enforcement to address these issues, and it drags this town down. Now, there are many other issues that feed into that, housing, economic development, they all play a role. But just the stigma that we have become the town with the $400 rent and the heroin highway is enough to drive anybody to crazy if they live in that. We need to address that now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next question is according to a report by the Virginia Tourism Corporation, which visitors contributed $2.8 million in tax receipts in our community in 2017. There's a tremendous amount of tourism potential in our community, especially... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, Mr. Holloway, yes. I had myself, I'm sorry.
Oh, are you asking me that question?
You've been elected. What's your number-one priority while serving on council?
Well, I think that most of us up here agree that economic development is a must. My grandparents, my parents worked at Aptex, when they were at Aptex, plant closed down, a lot of people started traveling down the city. I think the town needs representation on the EDA. I think we need people in there, we need at least two representatives. We need people in there that's going to fight for the town. We need more jobs here, better-paying jobs in our community to keep people from having to travel down the city, keeping them away from their families. I've done it, I've done it, and it's marvelous. And I think that's work on many things, is bringing better-paying jobs here to our community. Thank you.
Okay, now, again, I apologize, my mistake. Next question, according to a report by the Virginia Tourism Corporation, visitors contributed $2.8 million in tax receipts in our community in 2017. There's a tremendous amount of tourism potential in our community, especially considering our proximity to Chicago National Park. If elected, what do you think the Town Council should focus on to improve the visitor experience? And we'll start with Mr. Tedditt.
Well, one, of course, we've got Skyline Drive here, entrance here. We need to promote that more because it's a federal park. I worked up here for one year, it's a beautiful area up there. Sites are up there unlabelled with overlooks, although we need to bring that to the people outside the county. Of course, we already got tourism there, and right now is this time of year, it's October. Everybody's coming here for the leaves, and also, we've got the festival this weekend. Also, I would like to see more advertising from us out here, more websites split up from Reckon, Rand, Gally. Because I think if we work with them, we could probably get better tourism, improve that, my stuff.
All right, thank you, sir. Mrs. Thompson, if elected, what do you think the town should focus on to improve the visitor experience?
So, being this time of year, this fall, the leapers start here. I think we should do a better job of putting them downtown when they get off of the drive and are headed back into town with maybe a whole, like, just a signage that shows we can go here, 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 with the restaurants that we have. So definitely signage, putting them downtown. Some other things that we could do as far as tourism is making sure we're getting out there in front of the people who are down in the city, whether it is doing trade shows or whatever we have to do to get our name in the front of things. That's the important thing, getting our names out there. Increased web traffic helps, but we have to be advertising that website.
Thank you so much. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you. First and foremost, we need to start the engineering things of Leech Run Parkway flyover. We need to utilize our number-one resource, which is a natural resource. We have five rivers. You know how many communities would kill for five rivers? Eco-tourism is booming. We have a sign that says we're the capital of Virginia for canoeing, but I don't see very many canoes. I would capitalize on the businesses that are in town, that are investing in this area. I would have interpersonal relationships with all those business owners, and I would make sure that whenever a new business comes to town, they wouldn't have to go through the monstrosity that they had to go through for years on end with the inspections. It's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Carter, if elected, what do you think the town should focus on to improve the visitor experience?
Pure and simple, make Front Royal a destination, not a thoroughfare. There are visitors that fly through this town every summer. I used to be located on Royal Avenue. The trailers would come through, but they would keep on passing through till they got to the Scott. There's no track there. There's not even a sign on the two magnificent bridges directing them to downtown. There is one to get on the other side, but the bridges themselves, they ought to be held, and they don't even give instruction, historic downtown Front Royal. So our concentration would be, number one, signage, hotels, and better tourism management. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holloway, your thoughts?
I think that for Royal right now, I think we're on the right path, Main Street. With the changes that we've made in the past few years, especially with businesses coming to Main Street, it gives our tourists, visitors, more options. I know when I go down Main Street now, it's lively as compared to the way it was a few years ago. So I think right now we're on the right path, bring more businesses to downtown. I know during the lead change, a lot of times it's hard to get through town. You've got tourists coming in, you know, thousands. So I think the more business we bring down into downtown, the better off we are. I think we're on the right path. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gillespie?
Since being on council, you get a better understanding of the families and the women who've worked for us here in the town. I feel flesh of heart does an amazing job for us in the area of tourism. And I tell you, we've been, you know, we live in the prettiest part of our country. I've been to a lot of different places, and there's nothing better than where we live. I think we need to concentrate more on the web and trying to get out there for us to be able to get people as far as the canoeing and the festival and things like that. I think we're on the right road when it comes to tourism. Thank you.
Our next question, running for Town Council, you've been visiting with the citizens. What are the biggest concerns, and how can you address those issues if elected? We'll start with you, Mrs. Thompson.
In my watch, the building and property maintenance code comes up quite a bit. And so that's an important thing, obviously. We have people here who seek to make the biggest buck and do the least amount of work they have to do on their property, and they don't care how their tenants live. That's wrong. This is also another result, another thing, when we're talking about these jobs coming in, you improve someone's income, you improve where they live because they can move, they have an option, they're not stuck. And that's what I hear, as I'm walking around, and I visit apartment buildings, things like that. I've been walked through some of these places. So it's a very big thing that's going to come up in the next couple of years, and I want to keep pushing it forward, that we put something in place where people have a method to contact, reach out, have their property inspected. If it's incorrected, it's wrong, it gets repaired, the landmark faces a consequence.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
So, I know I'm not supposed to say that, but I've been challenged for four years to improve not only homeowners' rights but renters' rights. So there is a little bit of bias when I go speak to people because I'm speaking to certain populace. But first and foremost, we have to have vision, okay? And vision is cast from the top, all right? And the mayor would be the champion of this vision. Council would make sure that vision is sought through, but the community, as a grassroots approach, would provide that vision. And I think we don't have that actual community involvement in terms of what's here now, what's to come, and seeing it through. I have a lot more to say, we have the yellow light, but that is it. You have to look at social, economical, and environmental vision for this town to thrive.
Remind me, the yellow light just stopped 20 seconds.
There we go.
All right, Mr. Carter?
Do you want to take your questions?
Absolutely. While running for Town Council, you've been visiting with the citizens. What are their biggest concerns, and how can you address those issues if elected?
The biggest concerns, number one, is the, again, crime problem, drug problem, housing, maintenance of the infrastructure here. But we can't do this alone. We have two magnificent educational facilities right close to us. You've got Christian over here, you've got LCT, who's not wrong, some little resources that could help us possibly in this fight. Now, we're in a fight because we are a community, and when you hurt, I hurt. So my thing is to find a solution that is practical and cost-effective and implement it as soon as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holloway?
Well, I had two of the issues that have come up while I was going on the war. One is pedestrian safety, and the other is the drug life. And I think right now, Town Council is, I know I attended a work session a while back, and they are attempting to curb the pedestrian safety. It's gotten pretty bad in the last few years. I know there's been several accidents, even people being killed. And also with the drug life, I saw a bit of two families that have been affected by the opioid issue. And I think that's something that we should come together as a community to try to solve because these young people that are taking their lives, they're our future. They're the future leaders. So I think that's something that we really must address. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gillespie?
Yes, thank you. Some of the biggest concerns that I've had knocking on doors is economic growth for our town. Number two would be our delectable buildings that we have in our town. We're working with council, we just passed the property maintenance, and I'm looking forward to keep working with council to find ways to get this under as fast as possible. Thank you.
All right, sir. And Mr. Tedditt?
I know a lot of people in town from my father, everything. One thing, I ran for Town Council this year, a lot... The one thing that a lot of people talk about, especially the last several years, has been the opioid problem taking this town. We need to get our law enforcement to back them up. One thing, and also, we don't have a campaign to stop drug addiction in our schools anymore. You don't hear that anymore. Back when I was in high school in the eighties, we had this campaign going, just say no. You don't hear that anymore, anything. Also, we need to improve tourism, parking down on Main Street. I've seen that a bunch of people ask about being put in a parking garage down there. Also, taxes, everybody talks about taxes. They want taxes raised, they want to leave right where it is. Also, approval on the roads here in county, everybody's doing a pretty good job. But the one thing everybody's talked about, also, that the town has done very good, that they really worked with the county the last several years, they really liked how things are going. I'd like to see more improvements there as possible.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Our next question, there are some who feel that Front Royal is not always business-friendly. If elected, what do you feel you can do to change this perception? And it's time to talk with Mr. Morrison.
Full disclosure, I changed it. What I mean by that is, once again, this is a community. That's why we're running a non-partisan race. It's a community. Every single person has a voice, and they have to be represented as a body from council. So with that being said, you have to go and speak to these businesses, but when you're done speaking, you have to take action. The action would absolutely, once again, be in a community effort.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. Carter, your thoughts?
Appreciate it. Got some footage, just to make sure I got it.
All right, sir. There are some who feel that Front Royal is not always business-friendly. If elected, what do you feel you can do to change that perception?
There are several regulations that prohibit business owners, and I happen to be one, that are very prohibited, is not business-friendly, they do not induce the ability to look at this town and assimilate with this town to make business work. Businesses that are working have found the right model. It works. There are numerous models that were working down in Front Royal. We have not fully surveyed them, we have not fully implemented them, and I think that's a partnership between the community, the business owners, the law enforcement community, as well as government. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holloway, your thoughts?
Well, I think that's an issue really with the EDA. I think that with the town having representation, if we have representation on the EDA, I think that that would improve. It's been said a long time that Front Royal isn't business-friendly, but I can tell you right now that, you know, I think we are. I just think it takes a little bit more effort from the EDA to bring it to our community. You know, not so much outside of the town, the county, but we need jobs right here in town. So I think it would be up to them with representation from the town.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gillespie?
The number-one thing would be to help cut your option, to help bring these businesses to us. Like I said, we live in the most prettiest part of our country, and, you know, there's a lot of businesses out there who would love to come to Front Royal and then make it their own. Thank you.
All right. The question is, there are some who feel that Front Royal is not always business-friendly. If elected, Mr. Tedditt, what do you feel you can do to change that perception?
That sounds like the same question.
I haven't answered it yet.
Okay.
Is it my turn?
Your turn.
All right. Okay, so in talking to several business owners, there are things that go on that are not business-friendly. There are delays in getting things opened because of various inspections and things that just, I don't know, are not business-friendly, you can't get your doors open as fast as you want to. We also have, if you need the water sewer hookups, you're looking at $15,000, $20,000, more, actually, more than that for business. So we have a lot of things that prohibit it, make it harder. We also have issues with not allowing people to do what they want with their own property. If you pay for your property and you want to run a business that is completely legal, why are we getting involved in any of that? We're not helping the business. The idea is to get people to visit these businesses, spend money, generate income, generate tax revenue. We're not doing that if we're prohibiting businesses, if we're making it slow, making it hard for them, or deterring business. Why do we want to do that? We don't want these empty buildings on Main Street that we currently have. Let's make it a friendly place for businesses so we can get them to come in here.
Thank you so much. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. Carter. The question is, Front Royal and Warren County need to work together on many projects. How do you feel you can build a good working relationship with the Warren County Board of Supervisors, or do you feel the relationship is fine as it is?
I think that's an excellent question, which really opens the door for extreme cooperation between the two entities. Front Royal can work well off of the benefits that are derived from the county, such as purchasing. They buy a truck, they get the best price. Why can't we buy it at the same price? We do the administrative task, we have those people in the administration that have already done the surveys, already done the work. Why can't we pay them back? A part of this is how do we operate in a cost-effective manner to the point where we can now reap the benefits of that cost-effectiveness? A lot of that is done through the GSA, which the county does take advantage of, I'm sure. The town may not necessarily do that, but we could certainly benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holloway?
Can you take your question for a second, please?
Sure. Front Royal, Warren County needs to work together on many projects. How do you feel you can build a good relationship with the Warren County Board of Supervisors, or do you feel the relationship is fine as it is?
Well, I mean, it keeps going back to economic development. And I, I say this, and I'll keep saying this, I think that, uh, we need to work together with the county. I know the county funds the EDA. I know we need to work along with the county to help bring in more businesses, more jobs to our community. Not only that, uh, the drug issue here in our community, it's not only, uh, town, it's a county, it's a community problem. And I think that working together with the county would help, uh, with those issues. And I, and I think we're on right there. I know the, the rest, relationship with the county, when I was on council before, wasn't, uh, the best, but, uh, I think it's improved over the past few years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gillespie?
Yes, like Mr. Holloway was saying, you know, the relationship between town and county wasn't the greatest. But, uh, I think now, going forward, we have a great working relationship with Warren County. And, uh, I think we all have the same goals in mind, to better our community. And I look forward to working with the county as much as I can to be able to continue in that relationship. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tennant?
Yes. Um, one thing, we, one thing that has, like, has discussed here, that the town and county has improved relations the last few years. I believe there are, and more things accomplished. Um, I'd like to see, uh, well, maybe more, uh, more, I'd like to see more, more depressed than anything else, make people think that, that people know what's going on. Thank you.
All right. The question, Mrs. Thompson, is, Front Royal and Warren County need to work together on many projects. How do you feel you can build a good working relationship with the Warren County Board of Supervisors, or do you feel the relationship is fine as it is?
You build relationships between government entities the same way you do anybody else. You have come together, you sit down, you have discussions about the issues, what's going on, and you have a back end for it. Governments are working together, we get things done, and that's the important part. Um, I think that's all I have. I mean, we have to work together and get things done. Um, we're slowing down processes when it's going through, I don't know, EDA, then town council, then this place, that place. At the end of the day, we wasted six months. Um, so coming together and hashing things out earlier, I think, is key.
Thank you. And Mr. Morrison?
All right. So, I'm going to go with the memory here on the question, but it sounds like it boils down essentially to collaboration. You're talking about one entity versus another entity, which ultimately are people. So, when you have a high turnover with elections every two years, and new bodies coming in, new vision coming in, new chemistry coming in, you have to have a long-term vision. You just have to. We have to have a long-term vision, and then that will allow for the, the collaboration because if I come in, well, I don't need to walk you through it, hold hands here, but that's the answer. I'm not here to provide lip service. It's collaboration, long-term vision, and ultimately, working with one another, just being, just being honest.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Next question will start with Mr. Holloway. In respect to downtown parking, do you think there's a real parking problem? And if so, how do you think you can address it?
Wow. Um, you know, it, I could say, yes, there is a, an issue with parking downtown, and I could say no. Business owners would say otherwise. Um, right now, I, I have been downtown on, on a Saturday night, um, and there's absolutely no parking at all, and, um, there are times that there's parking galore. Um, I know that, uh, people have talked about parking garage, well, how will we fund it? You know, that's the thing. The money's always the issue. So, um, I think that, you know, in time, you know, a parking garage would serve best for the community, but, uh, the issue would be to fund it. Um, so right now, I think we would just have to let it ride the way it is, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gillespie?
Uh, yeah. Parking garage is kind of, my thing, we do have a terrible problem downtown parking. And, uh, I would like that some point in the very near, near future, have town and county come to an agreement with, uh, putting a garage downtown. It can be used for the court system, it can be used for the town government center, and also it will alleviate a lot of this problem that we have downtown as far as getting places to park so people can come downtown and shop. And thank you, that's all I have.
All right, sir. Mr. Tennant?
Um, well, I, one of the people, one of the things that people have gotten, wanted to have a signature this year was the downtown parking. Um, I've heard so many suggestions to ease another parking lots in other areas, having some kind of a, uh, main street corner bus name, do some people there. I've had people suggest that to me. I've also had, uh, electric parking garage, how we get the money funded. Um, a lot of people said, well, can you go to the state and federal governments so they can help us give us a grant? Because we got, uh, we got a lot of businesses in that town, and not much parking, and I understand that. But that, that's what's suggested, some people have asked, suggested to council, all day council, and bring it to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson, the question is, in respect to downtown parking, do you think there's a real parking problem? And if so, how do you think the town should address it?
Um, parking is different on different days, different times. Do I pull up downtown and get front door service every time? No, not at all. And then I circle the block and I find my spot. Um, in regards to a parking garage, we have to ask the people, would you want us to, uh, how do you want us to fund this? Uh, do you want a tax increase for a parking garage? I don't know if that sounds shiny and fun, I have no idea. But, um, I think the parking situation, like I said, is different. Nighttime, um, evenings, around dinnertime, it gets a little bit busy with the restaurants downtown. Um, during the day, it's this busier with offices, kind of deal. Um, I'm usually able to find parking in the gazebo a lot. Um, so I don't think it's a huge, major, major problem.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
I'll tell you right now, we're not going to have a parking garage within five years. This is all I worked on when I was a planning commissioner for three years. We talked about parking, parking, parking. I think we have a, well, infrastructure, uh, do the best I can with it. The town wasn't designed for the amount of people it has. So the buildings, the placement of buildings and so forth don't allow for adequate parking. Now, we can however purchase land and start working on future developments in terms of parking, but, uh, in terms of a parking garage, you're talking one hundred to two hundred million dollars for it, and we don't have the money.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Carter, in respect to downtown parking, do you think there's a real parking problem? And if so, how do you think the town should address it?
Yes, there is a problem. There's a problem that simply that Front Royal, as a business community, as a residential community, is evolving. We need to keep up. We have not tried to keep up until we have issues from specific tenants with their problems, and they are correct. There needs to be a solution. The solution is, if we're going to grow, smart growth, we're also going to need to grow our parking, we're also going to need to grow our downtown sector to accommodate the businesses that come. Remember, we're trying to be business friendly. We can't be business friendly if you ain't got enough pocket space. Bottom line. So, the evolution of the town's, uh, solution to this problem needs to be done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next question will start with you, Mr. Gillespie. There are many revitalization efforts happening in and around downtown Front Royal. However, many derelict properties remain in the town of Front Royal. Is this an important issue to you? And if so, what ideas do you have to deal with the issue?
Uh, yes, um, now, revitalization is very important to me. Uh, you know, we, uh, here, we just recently got a grant from the state for about three quarters of a million dollars, which, you know, we're putting it to use for facade improvements downtown, and some signage, and, and things of that nature. Um, of course, derelict buildings are a big problem in our town, and that was why we had passed the, uh, the property maintenance code here as recently as last Tuesday. So, um, I would just, again, I would just like to keep working towards that goal, is to be able to, to clean up some of these buildings in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tennant?
Um, just repeat the question.
Sure. There are many revitalization efforts happening in and around downtown Front Royal. However, many derelict properties remain in the town of Front Royal. Is this an important issue to you? And if so, what ideas do you have to deal with the issue?
Um, first, we need to contact the property owners and get with them, because they're being, because they own the buildings, they, we got to get them to clean it up. Uh, the other thing is, is mainly, uh, a lot of people here in town that own properties, they'll live here in town. So they really don't really care, you know, what, what goes on. So I think we should get more emphasis into that, and, uh, because I've had a lot of people tell me all the years, that's just what goes on. A lot of people don't care about the properties they have there. So thank you, that's about it.
All right. Mrs. Thompson, your thoughts?
Derelict properties is a huge problem. It's also causing problems for other businesses, um, as well as, uh, people who are tenants next to them, or, you know, own property next to them. Um, the way that we get rid of these is to have consequences behind it. You get a fine, you tear it down, I don't care what you do with it, but you fix it. You fix the problem. Um, we talk about, um, drugs, and I'm not going to go into this, but we had like three overages this past week. It happens here. Um, and some of these properties, they look like little havens for activity like that. And we start cleaning it up, we're going to start seeing lots of changes around here, not just with buildings, but with people.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, there are many revitalization efforts happening in and around downtown Front Royal. However, many derelict properties remain in the town. Is this an important issue to you? And if so, what ideas do you have to deal with the issue?
If you could ask me one question, that's the one question I want you to ask. Because for five years, this is all I've been trying to do. We have one more vote, I believe it's on the 21st or so forth, that will make the, uh, basically the state code for property maintenance ordinance, uh, has taken a long time to get to that point. So you ask me, what would I do? Well, first, I'll, I'll pass, I'll cast my vote to pass that ordinance, and then we're going to enforce that ordinance. If a property is delerect, or homeowner, slumlord, whoever, however you want to choose to, uh, frame those people, frame those people, phrase those people, then you're going to do a cease and desist, and they're going to comply. Because when you're a renter, you're paying for a service, and that service should be provided, adequate housing. When you're a homeowner, your home should be protected. It shouldn't be property value taken down because people won't be responsible and take some initiative. The town has to do what they have to do to protect the citizens, and it's council's responsibility.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, your thoughts?
Yes, my thought is that we do need the property maintenance code. I am a little miffed because I hear people say we don't have the funds to pay for this enforcement. Uh, I think I've done my homework. I've gone through your budget, your eighteen, nineteen budget, and in the first twenty pages, I've identified over two hundred thousand dollars of roaming money that we could put our hands on to pay that code enforcer, or that inspector. Uh, how we missed it, I don't know, but I have been a manager of a multi-million dollar budget, and I know this fluff in every budget. We need to put it to good use, and if we are going to follow through with the property maintenance code, we need a qualified inspector going out there doing that, because the town will show some liability if that property owner raises an issue, and we have to defend ourselves. We're going to need the money. So, I'm saying, we've got the, we've got the means, let's get it done.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Holloway?
I think that the, uh, maintenance code is, uh, I think it's a great thing. I, I look forward to them passing it. Um, I think that one of the first things we need to do is hold the property owners accountable. Um, there are some really rundown places here in our town, and they've been sitting there for years and years and years. People have talked about it, we've talked about it, we talked about it when I was on council back in 2008, and they're still there, nothing's been done to them. And I think we need to hold those property owners accountable. Make them pay, make them pay. Um, not, if we have to go in and take the property, seize the property, tear it down, do whatever, hold them accountable for the cost. That's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will make sure that you all have your microphones turned on, so we have a continued in the, in the council's chambers here. But the next question, and we will start with you, Mr. Tennant, is, there are many special events and festivals held in downtown Front Royal. What pros and cons do you see coming from these events? And do you feel there should be a limit to the number of events being held?
Uh, no, I think I'd like to see more here. Uh, I remember, sorry about that. Uh, I like to see more festivals here in town. I remember the hours festivals here, now we don't see that anymore. I like to see a couple more festivals, like, just in that, for example. Um, this is down Main Street, they have the best days of the year, they have festivals here, and, uh, more festivals, more, more, for the best for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
All right. So let's not be like Bush and make it cryptic, this is Family Fun Day. Um, I, it's, it's ordinance issue, Mr. Seelag brought that to everybody's attention at the meeting, and we have so many events allotted, and we had exceeded them, based on what is currently in our ordinance. So, Family Fun Day came, um, it was a great draw to business. Um, my husband's business is on Main Street, they participated, they did a crap roll, it was a great time. I had never, I haven't seen that many people down on Main Street on Mother's Day in a long time, or maybe like three of them spring day. Um, and I, so I, I'm in support of adding an additional day. We've seen the results from this. This isn't, um, something new, we're not asking for a brand new one, we've seen what this festival does for the community. So, I agree with it.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, there are many special events and festivals held in downtown Front Royal. What pros and cons do you see coming from these events? And do you feel there should be a limit to the number of events being held?
To answer your question directly, the, the pros obviously are the, the increase of the influx of people to our town. Now, if we are prepared for that influx, it'll, it'll go off without a hitch. If we're not prepared for that influx, it's going to be disastrous. So once again, it's about policy implementation and coordination of those, of those events. I need the second part, please.
The second part is, do you feel that there should be a limit to the number of events being held?
You know, I don't, I don't think there's one side that's all in this one. I don't think I can give you an answer, and it's just, uh, the thing is, yes, I think that, I think there's a pro, but you're really not going to know until you get involved, and, um, it's a little bit of trial and error involved on this one, quite honestly.
Got you. Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Yes, I think that there are pros and cons to the number of events, number of events that take place downtown, but if you were really to query the business owners, I don't think it's so disruptive in, in a, uh, time span of a year, that they don't enjoy the benefits of the people that are drawing to Front Royal. Those people drive the economic development, they drive the businesses. I don't care how nice your business is, if you're not selling, you're out of business. So, unless you've got people, and you can keep those lights on and keep those people in this town, that's the only way we're going to really make this thing fruitful. The only con that I see to that would be some businesses directly affected by location. Other than that, I think that the town is right for that, and I think we need to do some real good planning and some good execution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Holloway, the question is, there are many special events and festivals being held in downtown Front Royal. What pros and cons do you see coming from these events? And do you feel that there should be a limit to the number of events being held?
Well, the pros are, I feel like, uh, bringing, bringing people to downtown, uh, especially, I, to me, I think the businesses benefit from it. Um, I know Family Fun Day, uh, everybody that I've talked to, they've been on the best parade that the town has all year, um, and it's a fun-filled event. Now, you know, the cons, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I was, I attended a work session, I believe the council discussed about the cost of a permit, uh, I believe it's like twenty-five dollars. Um, and they were talking about, uh, you know, they have, uh, police, uh, they have cleanup crews, uh, the cost to put on these festivals. So, but, you know, as for a limit on the number of festivals, I, I think it's a great thing for the town. I just wish that, uh, we didn't have the issue with the cost associated with the festivals.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, thanks. And Mr. Gillespie?
Yeah, I would not want to limit any of the events downtown.
You know, it brings people to our town. It brings our residents downtown, where we get to talk and see each other. And, you know, as far as the cons goes, you know, there is the party. But, that being said, there, there's more pros than, than not, or any con, when it comes to bringing people downtown. So, that's all I can say, thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Mrs. Thompson's coming to you first. What do you feel are the two single most important infrastructure issues facing the town?
So, Kermit Gutter is a huge one. I was sitting my neighbor, the cul-de-sac of Jamestown Road, we could easily use Kermit Gutter up there, it's like a little pond. Safety Kermit and gutter, and improving our streets, there are so many where we have extreme, like, potholes. Um, I busted a tire on one. Uh, so concentrating on things like that, our streets, our sidewalks, and of course, we're looking at the system out there for pedestrian safety on, we said, Shenandoah Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
You want me to pick two? It's gonna be roads and sewer system.
Mr. Carter, what do you feel are the two single most important infrastructure issues facing the town?
The groundwater is a big problem. Flooding, raining, hurricane season, in the winter, the snow, the ice melt, the sewer system is not handling it, that's a part of our infrastructure that needs to be accommodated. The influx of people downtown, the businesses downtown, they all need to be upgraded and brought around to the new standard again. This town's evolving, we need to evolve with the town. The infrastructure is a big part of that. If we can't support our business people and our residents, then we're really not offering support at all. So that is a very important issue for our council.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Holloway?
I would say our roads and storm sewer system. I know, uh, when we have any rains, you go down through North Royal Avenue, and you're, you're like going through the river. Um, it just, it's, it's horrible. So, I, that's not, not too likely, roads and storm sewer.
All right. Mr. Gillespie?
Streets and sidewalks, many places in our town, our roads are coming apart. And we need to find ways to be able to pay for, for infrastructure improvements. Um, the storm system issue, it, it's lower down in a lot of those places in our town than, than what the, what the storm sewers will be able to allow to carry away. So that's why we have the ponding of water down on, you know, North Royal, and down towards the wind, you know, the Wendy's area. So, I just wanted to let you know, there's not a whole lot we can really do, do too much about that, sir. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Tennant, what do you feel are the two single most important infrastructure issues facing the town?
Oh, clearly, as everybody else said, well, yeah. Well, I've got my signature this year, of course, that was, so thanks, people talked about it, Kermit, Kermit Gutter and services. Uh, I took pictures of, uh, the main incident where, on Sunday, I was at 25, my dad having lunch, I mean, done breakfast, where tower went out and warlord exploded, and had to help the anti car. About five steps there, the war was almost six inches deep right there in the steps. I mean, that everything's been fixed up. Uh, I've also had other people tell me about, about 55, what PJ's grocery store is. Uh, I had several videos that people sent me on Facebook when it, when it had rained on me. The water was almost this deep, it went down through the middle of the road. Uh, also, one other thing, uh, one part that I met, gentlemen, down on 14th Street, was the townhouse, where two yards, two hills, code for bad out there. All right, when I went down there, when it began to, that incident on that Sunday back in, uh, May, where we had, it had rained, uh, I went down there, and there was this much deep in the backyard. There's a lot of kids that played in that yard. I'll answer.
Next question, we'll start with Mr. Morrison. Uh, what do you feel are the biggest public safety issues facing the town at this time?
Forgive me if you don't like my answer. But, one of the biggest safety issues is the delerect and glided properties that people are living in third world conditions, and paying not third world price. Uh, these hotels, not gonna title them, not gonna go down that road, not on this platform, but you know what they are. Unacceptable. Uh, thirdly, the, uh, thirdly, the, the traffic pattern in the town, pedestrians getting hit, uh, pretty, writings on the wall, it's unacceptable. Uh, so, thank you.
All right, sir, thank you. Mr. Carter, your thoughts?
My thoughts are that we're back to evolution, we haven't kept up with the town growth. Uh, we haven't followed through on a lot of regulatory issues that concern infrastructure, that concern pedestrian safety. There's a lot of issues here that all come into play. I think that if we're wise, we put together a panel, we work it out, we get the solution, keeping the business community in the forefront, because it's about building them so they can help build us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holloway, what do you think are the two, or the biggest public safety issues facing the town right now?
I think the main thing is, I think the main issue is pedestrian safety. Um, not only, uh, more crosswalks needed, but we need to enforce that. I live in an area where there's several crosswalks, and I rarely ever see anyone using it. They tend to cross other areas beside the crosswalks, and there's also cars that travel down the road that will not stop for pedestrians at crosswalks. So I think that we need to start enforcing that. Um, the other issue, I, I agree with Mr. Morrison, is the blighted buildings. Um, you know, uh, not only that, but you got, uh, the properties that, you know, your renters, um, the buildings are in bad shape, um, they need to be taken care of, they won't do it, and it's just, it's, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gillespie, your thoughts?
Yeah, the, the two biggest public safety issues, uh, one, you know, my good friend, Mr. Seelag, has been, in his fear of his, his pedestrian safety. We've done a lot of, uh, good work so far, as far as, uh, helping, helping this area, and it's still a work in progress. Uh, number two would be the blighted buildings in our town, and, uh, I look forward to working with council on helping alleviate these problems. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tennant, what do you feel are the biggest public safety issues facing the town?
Uh, I would say the opening problem. Uh, I had a lot of talk to police officers over the last several years, talking about how bad it's gotten, especially our hotels, where people, uh, play out for a week, and they say they're, do their business there. Uh, also, I like the, uh, uh, traffic safety, uh, welcome, uh, people being very more careful, maybe talk to some of these kids more in schools about crossing the streets, they did a better job, and, uh, that's about it.
All right. And Mrs. Thompson?
Um, I feel like a songbird or something. But, uh, pedestrian safety is huge. Um, even bigger, in my opinion, is the property maintenance, the rental situation, because, of course, those buildings, the people in them, again, this is whole life. So this involves the opioid epidemic that we have, um, that we can't hide at this point, it's everywhere, every day. Um, it affects the, the kids going to school. I, it's a full life thing that's not being dealt with, and it's, it's huge. And I think that this ordinance, and it has to, when it's official, official, um, is gonna do a lot of good for everyone in the town, from business owners to the general people, I guess.
All right, thank you so much. Next question will be coming from our audience this evening, and we will start with Mr. Carter. So what steps will you take to control spending, and will you look for an audit of all departments?
Accountability is probably my, my strongest word. We have managers that manage different areas of this town, and they have budgets that they've been given, and proposed and otherwise going forward, but how do you manage that? Unless we become good stewards of the people's money, and we're spending it like it's our own money. I've heard people say, you don't spend what you don't have. So, you know, you just don't add a couple bucks to your budget, because if I don't get it now, I, I won't get it. But that's the budget thinking, that's the government type of thinking. We need to be more community in our thinking, and understand that what are we doing for the good of the people? First and foremost. And if we can keep that in mind as we look at the budget, and not as we implement the budget, we got a lot of maintenance issues, we got a lot of issues with our, our town operation, and it, it kills me to see that, but thank you, that's a far above.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Mr. Holloway, uh, what steps will you take to control spending, and will you look for an audit of all departments?
Well, I think, I think that's an annual thing, audit of all departments.
All right, Mr. Carter.
And, uh, town spending, I, I say, if you don't have it, don't spend it. You can't spend it. Uh, if you don't know where you wanna get it, and if you don't have it, you can't spend it. And I think that's the main thing right now, and I think, uh, I don't even think Police Department, $11 million Police Department, I don't think that's fully funded yet. I know they're talking about doing other things, uh, where they wanna get the money. And I think that's a question that the council right now is looking at, where are we gonna get the money? And when I was on council back in 2008, I, I voted against, uh, tax increases, and I'm not about to do that now. And so, my, I'm just curious, where are they gonna get the money to do what they, they wanna do now? And, uh, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gillespie?
What to do to help control spending? Uh, you know, I think every department needs to look at all, you know, different ways to be able to cut back. Um, we should always look for ways to save money on our taxpayers. And, um, that's it.
All right, sir. Mr. Tennant?
Yeah, tricky question.
Sure. What steps will you take to control spending, and will you look for an audit of all departments?
Well, you always gotta do an audit of all departments. We've always gotta do an audit of all departments every year. I think, uh, what I've seen in the last 10 years of the town council meetings, they've done that. I remember one year, they even did a Blue Ridge panel, to see how they could save money. And a friend of mine did that, he says, he called me up before he came to the council, and the next day, he says, Robert, I did everything I could, I did as much I could do. The council's done everything possible. So, I like to see, uh, that's what.
All right, sir. Mrs. Thompson?
Uh, I'm a big proponent of fiscal responsibility. Uh, I've noticed that the council gets hit with a lot of unexpected kind of expenses that come up, and I think we need to behave harder to do that. You, you get a no at some point, um, so that we're not going into debt for things that aren't an emergency. Of course, if an emergency comes up, that's different, you have to handle that. But if it's something that's not an emergency, and it was not planned for, then we can't do it. It's just, it is, is what it is. You can't, you should not spend money you don't have, it's called going into debt. We don't need a deficit in the town of Front Royal. Um, and I support audits, obviously. If you have nothing to hide, you're not a threat of an audit.
Mr. Morrison, what would you do, what steps would you take to control spending, and will you look for an audit of all departments?
First and foremost, I'm physically conservative, I raise taxes, have this in the last two years as a councilman. But we have to quit taking this reactive approach and start being proactive. Uh, we have to streamline services and so forth, to, to, as I like to call, trim the fat, and be more efficient. The next part of that question, uh, do I support audits? Of course I do, I support audits, because it's, they're not a bad thing. I'm audited every year in the federal government, and it helps with streamlining and being efficient, so I think it's a necessary, uh, I think it's a necessary element.
All right, thank you, sir. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Holloway. What's your plan to further development of the old Abtech property?
Wow. Oh, well, I, I think we go right back to the beginning. Oh, sorry. I think we go right back to the beginning. I mean, that's, that, to me, is a job for EDA. I feel that, uh, right now, with what they have going on, it's, it's a start, um, but it's been a long process, and I think that with the town and county hopefully working together, I think that we could build out there. I think that, that's the future of the town. I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna come, it's just gonna take time. But I think that's a job for the EDA, and I think it's important for the town to have representation on the EDA board. That's the only way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gillespie, your thoughts?
Again, you know, the Abtech site, again, the Abtech site, we need to do what we can to try and market Front Royal, because, you know, make no mistake about it, we need to bring manufacturing jobs to our town. And, uh, I, I just wanna work as hard as I possibly can to see that this comes to be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tennant, what's your plan to further develop the old Abtech property?
Uh, work with EDA. Uh, work with EDA, try to get more businesses out there. Uh, we got a lot of property out there, probably, I mean, I need federal, needs to be fenced up. Uh, I see a lot of areas, a lot of businesses out there, will come there, if we just get the EDA to work the town, work, work with them.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Um, I agree with working along with the EDA to, to, uh, market the property, to find the businesses. Um, it's a shame, because we're not meeting the demographics, certain requirements that they have, or like, the bigger companies like Procter &amp; Gamble, or Amazon, tech company, or, that would be huge. Um, those are walking distance jobs for many people. Um, so it's definitely something that needs to be looked at, and we need something to go there. It's sitting there, it's giving nothing. Um, so definitely a good place to put good paying jobs, and, uh, it requires the EDA and people working together to get this done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morrison, what's your plan to further develop the old Abtech property?
I'm not gonna sit up here and tell you I have all the answers, because I don't. That's why we rely on our, our working professionals to help us, guide, guide us through this process. Now, listen to me, the Abtech property has been perfect and ready to go for quite some time. Uh, I'm not at liberty to say, uh, some of it is privileged as to why certain deals haven't panned out. However, that property thriving is essential for the success of this town, and it goes back to the common denominator here, where we are a community, we need adequate housing. Why would you bring companies that are gonna generate more people in the area without adequate housing, affordable housing, like you're dealing with Warren County, Warren County school system? But I, like I said, I'm not gonna come up and sit up here and give all the answers like I, as if I have them. But, but that is, that is the reality. That is the reality. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Carter, what's your plan to further develop the old Abtech property?
Warren County, uh, as a, a co-partner in this whole adventure. One of the things we, I do understand that the county has undertaken a comprehensive plan, which included Abtechs. They have several options on the table. The town in and of itself should be willing to take a look at those plans as seriously as to how we market, when we market, and where we market, the town of Front Royal, by virtue of using our cooperation with the county of Warren. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next question from the audience this evening, we'll start with Mr. Gillespie. Front Royal has children being raised in motel rooms. How would you work to help these families obtain affordable housing?
It's never good, um, when, when children are living in hotels. Um, I would just, uh, one, I pray for those children. Number two is, um, you know, we, we need to, to definitely find ways to be able to find these kids, um, that are there, and to be able to, to, you know, get these authorities involved as best as we can, you know, to see if we can find some, some, some different, uh, different avenues and places to live for these, for these families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tennant, your thoughts?
Um, I guess work with social services, uh, other departments, state departments, and see how that goes. Because right now, I know in Front Royal, well, I do understand from a lot of property owners here in town, and a lot of realtors, well, two, uh, it was, uh, two years ago, but everybody, every, every apartment, everything down is pretty much stacked up. So maybe, maybe some service might know about more people, and we refer it to them.
All right. Mrs. Thompson, Front Royal has children being raised in motel rooms. How would you work to help these families obtain affordable housing?
All right, so, let's start with some basics. First off, it's not illegal for a parent to have to, to stay in a hotel with their kids. It's not illegal. It's always a last resort for these, uh, for these people who have to do this. Uh, this ties into all the volunteer work and stuff. This ties into all the volunteer work and stuff that I do. Currently, I'm working on a program with Pathways where the families will get a mentor and I'm going to be one of those mentors, where we meet for a couple of hours and we discuss the mind shift that has to happen. How do you save money to get out of this situation? Because they're actually spending more for hotel rooms than they would in actual rent. They just can't necessarily get in because maybe their credit is bad or things of that nature. So, we have to, to get to the root cause of this issue, which is, in many cases, it's just not being able to afford something. It is, you know, it's just some overall things. And yes, the epidemic plays into that. There's drug problems, but a lot of this is not something where police officers ever come in and take a kid because they love an hotel. That's wrong.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
I want to understand the context of the question. It's not about right or wrong, correct?
It's just asking, how would you help these families obtain affordable housing?
I can do that. Here we are again. We're dealing with the same issue again. We need affordable, adequate housing, whether it's new housing or revitalization of current homes. You know, I'd like to see these older homes revitalized. I mean, that is the backbone of Front Royal. You don't come to Front Royal, you don't come to Front Royal and not get some of that old charm. These houses need to be revitalized. We have, it's, it's done become a pandemic. You're not going to, you're not going to solve the problem overnight. That's why I've been fighting for five years to, to what we're now talking about, the majority of these questions. So, in wrapping up, I would say get to work. Let's keep going. It's long overdue.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Carter, Front Royal has children being raised in motel rooms and how would you work to help these families obtain affordable housing?
I understand there are more jurisdictions around us with housing available on an emergency temporary basis. Our own agencies should be coordinating the ability of those jurisdictions to pick up our overflow, to get those kids out of there. At the same time, we should have members of our management team researching and searching where we can find housing, even on a temporary basis, six to twelve months, to get them out of the hotel and get them away from that scenario and into a more fixed home environment. So, that's my answer. The other way would be just to build new houses and of course, that's Front Royal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Holloway, your thoughts?
Well, get them out of the motels. I know as long as they're cared for, I know it's not wrong, but, and I agree with Ms. Thompson, the issue, the big issue is most of the time is that they have bad credit. They're not able to afford the deposit or whatever on an apartment or a house. So, that's a big issue. So, I really think we need to work with social services, try to get these families out of the motels and into affordable housing. And, you know, if it's a job-related issue, help them, help them locate work. And that's something that we need to do.
Thank you, sir. Our next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Tenny. The question is, do you feel the town employees are paid competitive wages? And if not, what steps would you take to correct the issue?
Okay, I know it's been a long problem in town for the last ten years. I know some of the police officers have been, come here, they stay here about a year or two and they go off someplace else. That's, that's one. I know some employees, some of them grouse me that they said that, that they're not getting paid enough and they might as well go to Loudoun County. Right now, bottom line is a town, they had to sit down and work together and just see how to work this problem out. Because I know a lot of the town employees have left here and gone someplace else.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Thompson, your thoughts?
All right, so let me try to understand the question. Are we talking about people who work for the town specifically or people who were employed in town?
It says the town employees.
Okay. From what I've seen, looking over the budget, it looks, looks like competitive. I think there could, could be some slight increases here, to be honest. It's the same with the teachers, same thing.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
To be honest with you, I don't know what the question is.
Question is, do you feel the town employees are paid competitive wages?
I got it. Can you? Oh, sorry. That's our thing kicking up here. No, no, we've been working on this for, for two years now. Our employees need to get paid more. They need to have, they need to have comparable salaries to the surrounding areas, bottom line. And we have, and it's our job as council zoo and town manager to find it in the budget or however, to make sure that some employees get what they deserve. Because if we don't have, if we don't have competitive wages, how in the world are we going to continue to have retention? They're going to go to rabid hand and so forth. And that's what's happening.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, do you feel the town employees are paid competitive wages? And if not, what steps would you take to correct the issue?
I know they're not paid competitive wages. Again, I believe in good management governance of our budgets to the point that we need to be able to include a raise, not a big raise, but an incremental raise that's commensurate with the amount of revenue this town brings in. And that, that goes full circle. If my businesses aren't doing good, my tax base is not doing good, I can't give them the money. So, if we can make it so that our businesses give us the revenue and our residences produce the revenue, at which point we could afford a raise. Now, now I wouldn't be going to that, but that primarily will be answered. Thank you, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you. Mr. Holloway, your thoughts?
This has been an issue for several years. I know there are employees that work in the Public Works Department that qualify, I know they qualify, they still do, for welfare, it's sad. And I know that we're not competitive. So, you know, we need, and Mr. Carter was saying that, you know, if we could bring in more revenue to the town and hopefully afford to give these individuals, our employees, the salary they deserve, I think it's a must. I mean, we can go in a budget and hopefully find, find a few dollars, but it's, it's sad because I'm pretty sure that one of the biggest turnovers is in the Public Works Department and there are some of the hardest working individuals out there.
All right, sir. And Mr. Gillespie, your thoughts?
Yeah, the town of Front Royal, last year, did a compensation study for all of our employees and it's true, some eight, ten thousand dollars a year. Just judging by other communities, you know, that are comparable to ours, and it's unacceptable. I mean, these are our neighbors, you know? These guys get a point at telephone pole, you know, on Thanksgiving dinner, when the transformer blows, they're down standing in a ditch, twenty degrees outside, standing in water up to their head. They need to make a competitive wage and they have my full support in going forward with it. It was a three-year plan. We're on phase one. On the first year, the next budget cycle will be phase two, and I work to do everything I can to see that that gets implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next question, Mrs. Thompson, we'll start with you and this could be a juicy one. How do you feel about the level of taxes that the citizens of Front Royal are being assessed?
Why do I get this one? All right, can you restate that again?
How do you feel about the level of taxes that the citizens of Front Royal are being assessed?
Right now, I think where we are, it's fine. I don't think an increase is needed or anything like that. I am not sure what else to say on this subject.
All right. Mr. Morrison?
We're talking about the town, not the county, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Let me tell you, it's a blessing to have town taxes low as we do. Like I said, we've only raised it a half a cent in two years. Energy rates are some of the lowest in the entire state. In the military, I've traveled all over, all over the country and I've never seen taxes as low as I have here. I truly feel like we're blessed and I feel like we've had some, some very calculated, unfortunate decisions made by our town manager in years past that have projected us into this low, low tax base that we're currently in. So, all I can say is keep it up.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Carter, how do you feel about the level of taxes that the citizens of Front Royal are being assessed?
As a citizen, I'm proud to have the taxes where they are. However, I do see the problem, problems that are associated with that. We're talking not being able to pay employees enough, not having enough money to do the infrastructure problems we have. I'm not saying raise taxes, but I'm saying let's scrutinize what we've already done because we've got to maintain money. This is somebody else's money we're dealing with. And a lot of our people in management don't seem to get it. You know, this is my money you're spending, so I don't want to be in your face about my money. And this is what it comes down to. Taxes, I'm, I'm all for the good taxes. I love that, but I don't want to see them raised and this is the home of the lowest tax rate in Virginia, just about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holloway?
I love the tax rate. And I'm sure everyone else does too. I mean, we're a town, we pay town and county taxes. If we were a city, we'd be paying a higher tax, of course. But as it is right now, I know people say, hey, you know, you're not comfortable with other localities and stuff, but that's what, that's what makes, that is what makes Front Royal special. And I want to keep the tax rate low. I think there's other ways to earn revenue and I'm not for raising taxes and...
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Gillespie?
Yeah, all over a tax rate. And, and we are the host in the state and we all should be proud of that. We're very blessed to live in Front Royal. We have low electric rates, you know, zitrate and water. You know, the town shops, electricity sometimes, you know, I think three to four years out and that's why we, we get it that cheap a lot of times. So, I would just do whatever I can and keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Tenny, your thoughts on the assessment of taxes?
Basically, I've known all of yours, Toronto says some of those tax rates, but if you was to raise taxes in town, everybody shows up. But bottom line, I instantly understand that we've got some of those rates in this town and we should use that to use for people who want to move here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morrison, we'll start with you. Next question, there's been a rumor about passenger rail coming here. What would you do to encourage 21st century investments in our town?
Let's clarify, are you talking about the BRE?
I was reading the question, I was giving it to the audience.
I'm going to assume you're talking about the BRE. As a federal employee that has a five-hour commute, I would love the BRE. It better be an express, though. They make promises. They make promises, but you have to, you have to have the infrastructure ready. I know we have the rail already here, but you know how much, how many hundreds of millions of dollars would it cost to build that station? We better have a good reason for them to build that station, which means bodies. If it is the BRE, look at the example of Haymarket when they said no and it's the fastest-growing city in all of Virginia, it's a square mile. It's incredible, but I'm fired up, but, man, I wanted to answer the question more thoroughly. But yeah, I'm all for the rail. I'm all for the rail. Okay?
All right, sir. Thank you. Mr. Carter, your thoughts?
I thought it was that rail transportation would enhance our business and our economic development exponentially. We've got people coming in, we've got people going and they can get in quickly and they can get out quickly. That is naturally an enhancement to Front Royal. Thank you.
All right, sir. Mr. Holloway, the question is, rumor about passenger rail coming here. What would you do to encourage 21st century investments in our town?
I think it'd be a great thing. I mean, especially for commuters. I would wish for it. I've been told this in a conference before. And it, it would be a great thing. I mean, save time and money, just, you know, like I said, for the commuters, spend more time with their families, wearing turner vehicles. Like I said, I've done it before and it's, it's, it's not fun traveling down the road, but to get that commuter rail here, God bless.
Mr. Gillespie?
Who would be against BRE? Yeah, I certainly would, I would love to see it. Costs would be one they would look at, I guess, on this, but, you know, as with everything, there's where there's a way. Thank you.
All right, sir. Mr. Tenny, your thoughts?
Yes, I'd like to see the rail come here. Be great for us, like, like everybody said, for commuters, especially how much money you got, how much solar per se, if they get to ride a train to or from work every day, instead of just getting in a car and driving, paying all the gas, going down, up and down the highway. I mean, I drove several times, several years down to Gainesville, I'm working at land research. That's why I paid fifteen dollars to get on the van and that was a lot better than sitting like thirty, forty dollars a week in gas. Thank you.
All right. And Mrs. Thompson?
I support the passenger rail. I think it helps the work-life balance for the families who are already working down there. It means that parents are getting home earlier to be with these kids. That means it's not unattended kids and we all know, like, I don't hands devils playground sort of thing. So, I think it would be absolutely wonderful for our community. If they can get back home before dinner, that means they can also come downtown and have dinner downtown and not on the way home or just come home and they're so exhausted they just sit there. So, the work-life balance for the people who would utilize that is huge. I drove to Manassas and I couldn't pull my hair out for that. Thankfully, now I go the opposite direction, so less problems, going to a church, by the way. But yeah, so, I think it increases work-life balance and keeps our families doing family-related things.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, question for you. Now that we have a community block grant, how specifically do you feel that that money should be used?
Primarily to, to enhance the infrastructure in terms of sidewalks, curbs, gutters. And the community block grant, as I understand it, is something that, it's almost a one-time gift, we take it, but I've always believed that grants scare me because you pay for grants in the long run. But the town could use that extra money to enhance its own infrastructure in terms of curbs, gutters, aprons to businesses. And in some cases, we need to do some, some enhancements to the business facades that we have problems with. Use that money that way. So, it's, it, yeah, it's a good thing.
All right, sir. Mr. Holloway, your thoughts on that?
I agree. I think the block grant would be great for the sides, especially Main Street. Not only that, but roads, the infrastructure, storm sewers, curb gutter, everything. I mean, as you go downtown now, you'll see a hundred feet of curb gutter, you won't see anything. You'll go a few more feet and you'll see curb gutter. I think it's, it would be worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gillespie?
Yes, the community block grant for, for downtown revitalization is very important to our community. There are plans in the, in the works for restrooms downtown, building facades for our businesses, and there has been talk of immediately, eventually a pavilion being put downtown. I love spending time down in Zeevo and anything that will help bring people downtown to visit to help our businesses out is always, is always a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tenny, now that we have a community block grant, how specifically do you feel that money should be used?
Well, pretty much everybody said it tonight, it's pretty much what town needs, curb gutter, sewer systems, maybe fix some of the air plug planners and everything, probably. And maybe place, maybe place the ratio where we're across the stadium is a big idea, just to lock the door up here. Thank you.
Mrs. Thompson?
The community block grant, I think, is excellent to improve the look and feel of our downtown. Restrooms downtown would be amazing. I think that's a great idea. And a splash pad, I really like a splash pad. But I think these are all things that would be better, that are good for us. Anything that we can do that attracts people to come downtown is, is what we should do with that money, whatever that is. What'd you say? Someone said something, I want to look at that.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Morrison, now that we have the community block grant, how specifically do you feel that that money should be used?
Key word, specific, I believe that block grants for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I was on planning when Jeremy, Jeremy Kemp, you know, drafted up the proposal... I was on planning when Jeremy, Jeremy Kemp, uh, you know, drafted up the proposal for that grant. When Felicia Hart told us, council, that we were receiving the block grant, we were beside ourselves, but like you said, you have to figure out a way to actually delegate the funds. Uh, first and foremost, Street State One, Jackson Street update through this grant would be, would be phenomenal. Uh, in the, in the proposal, it was mainly targeted towards the facade. Okay, so we're one, we're two at one on the facade. I think what we, what we're looking at here is when a, when a business wants to open up in Front Royal, they have to go through so much great pain to get that business to suit the needs of their business. I think the facade or, or the money in the block grant should help with implementing new businesses because a lot of them are spending a ton of money in their own leasing bill.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Business growth.
Thank you. Final question for this evening, we'll start with you, Mr. Holloway, the Chamber of Commerce, the FRIBA, the EDA, just a few of the key organizations and agencies here in town. Can you share with us what your involvement and communication with these agencies has been? And if elected, how do you feel you can work with these organizations for the better than the Front Royal? I will ask it again. Bring it in, man.
Yeah, can you repeat that question?
Sure.
Well, my, um, basically, when I was on, uh, council previously, um, I know the council worked closely with the EDA at the time. Um, we've always, uh, worked with the chamber. Um, and, you know, if, uh, if I am fortunate enough to be elected, um, I'll continue to do so in that capacity and, um, hopefully do what's right for the town of Front Royal and citizens.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lesby?
Yeah, I think it's very important for, uh, council to work with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and it's also very important to work with our EDA. Both, um, as far as the chamber, you know, they help our local business centers in our town, and, um, it's always a good, it's always a good thing. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Tennant, how do you feel about your working with these key organizations for the better than Front Royal?
Everyone should work together, should work, we all should work together because this is our community. And, uh, because everybody's working together, it's bringing as quick as possible. And within English citizens bringing suggestions, how we can do better, that's how we call this community, you know, in town and county.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Thompson?
I think that's an important thing. Uh, Chamber of Commerce, we have all of our businesses, our members, if you wanna understand business issues and things like that, we need to talk to the owners. Um, a great way to do that is to make service and things like that, um, and hear and help those issues and taking them back and taking action on them, not just listening and doing nothing. Um, but definitely, I think we all should, we, we have to work together. I mean, the businesses are what is running our town, what keeps things going, keeps people unemployed, uh, keeps us having entertaining venues, everything. So I think it's, it's important to matter, we definitely work with Chamber of Commerce and every other organization in town to accomplish goals, and the goal is improving the lives of the people in our community.
Thank you so much. Mr. Morrison, thoughts about your involvement with these key agencies and also how you're gonna continue working with them if elected?
All right, bear with me, I have five points to cover and however long to do that. So five points, I'm gonna first, I wanna stay on script, I'm gonna identify and create redevelopment into industrial zones in the town based on industrial segments. Second, I'm gonna identify the incentives that could be offered to attract these businesses. Third, creation of a town redevelopment authority to work with the EDA. Fourth, move town marketing manager and budget to head up this redevelopment authority. And lastly, I'm going to utilize interns for marketing research projects while they support our region, from their regional universities. And I did it without the L.I.
Thank you, sir. Hey, Mr. Carter, your thoughts?
Could you, we change the question, please?
All right, sir. The Chamber of Commerce, the FRIBA, the EDA are just a few of the key organizations and agencies in this town. Can you share with us what your involvement and communication with these agencies has been? And if elected, how you feel you can work with these key organizations for the better than the Front Royal?
I'm not a doctor, I don't play one on TV. EDA, Chamber of Commerce, a specific discipline that enhances the town in many aspects, whether it be from how to enhance and build your business to the point where it's recognizable, down to what festivals they offer, what programs they offer, with LSTC right now, we're supporting development. Those are the things they're good at. You know, we have issues with certain people, but I would tell you point one, I'm not gonna try to do their job, but if they're there, I'm gonna maximize their use for the benefit of this town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, time now for our closing remarks, and we'll go in the opposite direction that we went. We had an opening remarks, you will have two minutes each for your closing remarks. And Mr. Carter, we'll start with you.
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you for coming out here because this is important. Sometime you need to see a face to know a face. You kinda know what people think when you talk to them, to be able to see them live and in living color most of the time. But they're gonna tell you what they're gonna offer you as a part of what they intend to do if voted in office. I intend to do two things. Respect your rights as a member of a community, which includes the business community, the residential community, the law enforcement community. I think as a community, we need to work together. I spent the last three years in this town trying to pull this community together, and it's happening slowly, but it is happening. I'm not gonna give you a whole bunch of spiel on what I can do for you if elected. I will show you, and I learned in church, let the works that I've done speak for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morrison, you have two minutes.
I'm fired up, okay? So y'all bear with me. I'm passionate about what I do, and I hope, I hope it's portrayed as such. I'm a federal employee. Why should I be penalized because I've chosen to continue to serve our country as a civil servant, servant? Let me explain. Council, council cannot, shall not represent a political party. Council must serve the people, each and every one. Uh, in fact, when I took the oath to become a council, I swore that I would uphold the United States Constitution, the Virginian Constitution impartial. You can do that without representing a political party. It's not about endorsements, it's not about, it's not about having signs in somebody's yard, it's about qualification, it's about leadership, and my God, it's about some character. I'm the only candidate that has been directly involved in current and future projects without a break in service for the last five years. That is an enormous amount of knowledge and awareness to let go to waste. I'm a veteran, civil servant, and now public official. I have been serving my nation and community since I was 17. I know the problems we face, I know the problems we will face, I know what is needed to tackle them. I know things that are coming up from council from my time on planning that will need a clear and understanding in order to be done right and ensure the right amount and type of growth for our town. For instance, there will be a vast growth around Leach Run Parkway, Peptap, and Front Royal Limited Partnership, which ties into the need for road improvements around Happy Creek Road. Like I said, I am fired up because it's wrong to penalize somebody because they are either a federal employee or do not get an endorsement from a party. We are one, the vote should be represented by all, and I'm not afraid to take on the unpopular fight, I've been doing it for five years. So you don't have to wonder what I'm gonna offer you, just simply look at my record. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Thompson, you have two minutes.
Okay, so I'm like fired up, and not Chris Morrison fired up, so I don't have that much energy tonight, but, um, some, some takeaways about me. Um, so it's important for, for me, that everyone feels that they have a voice, that someone is listening, and that someone will act. I seek to be that person, my motto is boots on the ground. I feel this is a very good way to understand issues and to resolve them. I am not afraid of hard work to research the issues, the solutions, uh, to make the hard calls or the decisions. I'm committed to Front Royal and to the citizens to do my absolute best in representing you. I also took some notes from some other things that have come up, and, um, I encourage everyone in here, because we're talking about these lighted properties, we're talking about the heroin epidemic, we're talking about all those things, and that's great, they're being brought up. Get out there and do something. And I, I'm sorry to be personal, get out there and do something yourself. If you're not out there, you don't understand, it's trouble, you, you just don't. Um, I bring a very diverse background to council. I have not always been in a position where we were well off or comfortable, I grew up very poor. I understand how these things work and how people are affected and what happens when people don't get involved. I know how my life improved, um, and I seek to give back all the time. I've been in homeless shelters. By the way, there are not enough here, even in this region, there are not enough to cover these people. They lack funding for basic stuff like food for the, for the kids that are there, safety issues because they're in domestic violence situations. Get out there and get involved. These things are not gonna resolve themselves, we need people, we need bodies, people who care will go out and do that. I encourage every single person, and I know this has nothing to do, well, it does, it has to do with people. Volunteer, get involved. You don't think you have time, trust me, you can find time. I have kids, I have households, I work, I volunteer, you can do it. Do it.
Okay, you have two minutes.
I wanna thank the Chamber of Commerce for having us, uh, uh, session today, because I think it's just best for the public to find out how their candidates are. I really love the people I've seen here, seen that everybody that wants to contribute to this town. That's great. I mean, I'd see more, like, I'd see more people do it. Bottom line, I see everybody here. Uh, also, I just wanna say a few things about our town that, I love the front town of Front Royal. It's a beautiful town. I graduated high school in '85, uh, the Main Street was barely to be read by last, remember it's spent $10,000? Today it's got a gazebo, and people come down and see it, they've got the hanging, hanging, um, flowers on the, on the light poles, which has come real wide, uh, recognized. And the thing is, we, you know, Front Royal, you know, Picktown, we used to work together with all of the candidates. Also, I want to thank y'all for being here tonight, and also I wanted to ask to free vote on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Lesby, you have two minutes.
I wanna thank the Chamber of Commerce tonight for the forum. I have enjoyed serving people on council. I am proud to support our police department and have done so in, in the radio purchases. I feel as though the police department should be one of the highest priorities to make sure they have the proper equipment, not only protect our citizens, but to keep themselves safe as well. Another area of high importance is ensuring our town employees have living wages and receive the latest training and certifications. To protect this investment, we must hold these same employees to the highest professional standards. I have voted for infrastructure improvements such as the crash and road upgrades and new bridge. As a taxpayer, I feel that infrastructure and maintenance should be one of our top priorities. Lastly, we need to cut government bureaucracy to create a business-friendly town, which will create more jobs and encourage workforce housing. We need to cut some of the take that hinders employers from considering Front Royal. This is one reason that I voted against the tax increases this past budget cycle. This is my vision for the town, and I hope it's a vision you can support. I asked for your vote on November 6th for Front Royal Town Council. God bless you and God bless our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Holloway, two minutes.
Well, I tell you, I had, I had a lot to talk about here in my closing statement, but it seems like I covered about everything that I have down here. I can tell you this, I, I was born and raised here in Front Royal, and I love this community dearly. And I can tell you this, that I will do what needs to be done to keep this community as friendly and as loving and as business-friendly as possible. And I can tell you this, that if I'm elected to town council, you, the citizens of Front Royal, will always have a voice. I promise you that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, Alfred Carter III, Gary Lesby, Chris Holloway, Christopher Morrison, Robert Tennant Jr., Latasha Thompson, your candidates for town council. We thank you all for coming tonight, we thank you for your willingness to serve the citizens of Front Royal. Thank you for being here this evening. I also wanna thank Dwayne Coats for the video driving for us. Thanks to the county of Warren for allowing us to use facility, also the Warren County Writers' Office, Gerald Tobin, also the public and local media for assisting with questions. Reminder for you that this forum will be aired in its entirety on Government Access Channel 16. Please thank you all for coming tonight.